Good evening. I'd like to call to this, to order this special meeting of the town council on the budget for Thursday, April 28th, 2022. Please rise for a moment of silence. Do you have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to call the role of departments actually in reverse order just to see who gets to skate. Anybody have questions for the health department? No questions for the health department? So far, you get a break. Questions for the building department? No questions for the building department. Questions for zoning board of appeals? No questions for zoning board of appeals. Questions for planning and zoning? No questions for planning and zoning. Questions for inland wetlands? Nothing for inland wetlands. Questions for the conservation commission? No questions for the conservation commission. Questions on the six-year capital budget, cap and nonrecurring? No one on the council has questions on six-year capital or cap and non. Questions for the engineering department? Wow, no questions for engineering. This is unprecedented. Questions for public works? You're stuck. Questions for civil preparedness, which is also, I think, emergency management? Questions for fire? We have questions for fire. Questions for animal control? We have questions for animal control. Questions for police? For real?
Do you have a question?
Always, but... Wow, so at this point, the health department, building department, zoning board of appeals, planning and zoning, inland wetlands, conservation, six-year capital, cap and nonrecurring, engineering, emergency management, you all get a pass tonight. Actually, police, nobody had questions for you. First up, animal control. For those of you following at home, that's page 33 in your budget book. Good evening, please remind us who you are for the record.
Yes, Mitch Gibbs, animal control officer.
Thank you. When you're answering questions, stay close to that mic.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilors Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, hi. I wanted to just take an opportunity just to ask a quick question on the differential between your current budget that you're utilizing and spending and, and the increase that I see here for the, for the request for this year, which the mayor entirely approved. I just want to confirm that, that is this, is this offset because we've got an additional head to hire here? Is that what that is? Or are those, or is there more to that? I just want to make sure I read that correctly.
Yes, it's for the additional full-time position.
All right.
And also an increase in the pay range for the part-time position.
Yeah, and I, and I figured that's what it was. I was going to try, you were one of the people I didn't get a chance to call, and which is why, just as kind of a point of reference for everybody watching at home, a lot of us don't have big burning questions for a lot of the departments because a lot of the times we, we might call offline, but I, I didn't get a chance to call the, the shelter to get my questions asked. And I also had an additional one that I feel is, is pretty, has been, has been asked along. I'd like to get an opportunity to ask you about the repairs and upgrades that you've been making right along in, in the facility, as well as the air conditioning. I believe that went out to bid?
Yes.
And, and when, you know, I, that I don't believe is reflected in here anywhere because I believe that's money that we appropriated forward, is that correct?
The, the air conditioning is coming out of the trust fund.
Okay, so it's out of, out of the trust fund entirely, okay. And can you give us a quick update on that then?
Yes, so Public Works has done all of their pre-work up to this date. The electrical's been run, the concrete pad for the unit outside has been poured. The vendor, the HVAC vendor, was there yesterday tapping into the, the gas line to, to fuel it. And now we're just basically waiting for them to begin the installation, which could, you know, be possibly as early as next week.
All right, great. And then just some of the other ancillary items that I, I remembered. At one point, there was an issue with hot water in the facility. Has that been addressed, or am I not recalling that correctly?
No, the, the hot water is, is working.
It is working, okay. I, I may, I may not be remembering that correctly. Maybe just really quick, and you probably don't have the answer, I'll probably be asking the mayor the question. Mayor, with respect to the, the trust fund for the animal shelter, we, and I, we just confirmed that we utilized some of that funding for the air conditioning. How has that affected the overall balance? It's brought it down? Do you know offhand what it's brought it down to?
Well, the, the money hasn't been paid yet, so once they finish the work, it would be paid. But I don't have the, I don't have the total, but I would assume it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 700, 600, 700,000.
I believe it's in that range. I haven't looked.
All right, I can, I can follow up separately. I, I didn't necessarily figure that you would have it handy, but I'll follow up because I want to get an understanding of, you know, where it is, you know, what, what we're expending now on, on this activity and where ultimately, you know, we, we might end up in future, future act, actions and activities for the shelter. So thank you for that. Are there, so you've got your budget outlined here, and like I said, the only departure was the extra salary, which is what I kind of figured that was. And of course, the increases in the pay there. Do you, when you've set this budget up for the discussion with the mayor, do you, do you feel you've got what you need to operate the facility successfully for, for, you know, this budget year? There's nothing that you, you kind of cut a corner on that kind of make a budget fit? Do you have everything you need to be successfully running and operating for the next year?
I believe I do. You know, I've been evaluating, you know, costs. I really didn't have much background information on, you know, costs over the years, expenditures. So I've been kind of paying attention to, you know, what we've been going through, you know, material-wise and, and stuff like that, and, and, you know, making my best predictions as to what we need. And I think this budget will, you know, will be a successful vision of that.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
If I could just add, just so that, and you're all aware, but anyone listening, the position being added is a full-time position. We've had difficulties in getting part-time, so there is a position that's supposed to be receiving some applicants, and we would look to hire, and that would be the third full-time individual there. Plus, we would continue to have a part-time, but
Yes.
We had three part-time, and the difficulty has been too much, so we're going to three full-time people.
Yeah, and that's, and that was part of, part of what my ask was. I, I saw that change, and I just wanted to confirm that. So yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else for animal control? Thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
Thank you.
I've been told that Public Works' question is very brief, so I'm gambling on that being true. I have it in writing, so if we can get you out of here, we'll do that.
Well, we will, we will all come up and be ready in case it's longer.
Page 51, for those of you watching in TV land.
Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this actually is not a question of mine, but I was emailed a question today from a resident who could not be here, and he asked me to ask on his behalf. So his email, he says, "Last summer, I noticed that the grass was repeatedly allowed to grow unsightly high at Dutton Park in between periodic mowings. I assume this was an issue perhaps due to restricted staffing as a result of the pandemic. I'd like to know whether Public Works has enough funding and seasonal help to maintain Dutton Park and perhaps others to the pre-pandemic standards we came to expect, or is there a new normal for town parks?" And he also mentions that he's concerned about ticks in the high grasses.
So the, the answer is, we're adequately staffed, we are adequately equipped. One of our capital items we're asking for actually is a replacement of our gang mower, which is a 16-foot wide mowing machine. Usually when this happens, at any park or field, and we have 22 parks in this town, 10 of which have active athletic fields, if you get a bad, or a stretch of bad weather and rain, you are bound to have tall grass. We're going to fall behind. And that, I would say 99 out of 100 times is the reason why I might hear complaints about excessively high grass in any of those locations. It is not a, a lack of staffing or equipment.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
So then, what I think of as the northeast corner of that park, that's pretty wet, isn't it? Near the stream? No?
We're still talking about Dutton Park, or?
No. No, there's no
It's pretty dry there.
There's no stream on Dutton Park.
Okay.
It just, well, I might enjoy that. Give my dog a place to play. Mr. Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since you guys have joined us this evening, I, I just had a question. As I, as I was looking through the budget, I didn't see any line item for a, for salt budget, and I was just curious if that's in there and how much it is.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. So salt is essentially hidden under operating and maintenance, the line 56140, materials and supplies. Salt is contained within the, that $490,000 that we're asking for. There's other materials and supplies that are including, included in there. Of that 490, I'd estimate almost 400,000 of it is, is for salt. We estimate the salts based on the last five-year average. Okay, thank you.
Counselors Andrew, so much for one question.
Yeah, just, no, I, something, something else came up. So this, this is going to be an aside real quick, but again, I want to, I, I just want to lend another thanks again to all town departments, but I'm going to use Public Works as an example. I spent almost an hour on the phone with Mr. Palermo, talking about different questions of different things that I had. So, you know, again, a lot of times when folks feel like we're not up here questioning the departments, it's because we're, we're getting a lot of the homework done ahead of time, and I just want to let people know that. And, and the thanks, special thanks to Mr. Palermo because he dedicates a lot of time to our conversations, gives me a lot of, a lot of details, and I really do appreciate that. My, my question was, is almost a hypothetical. I, I know you guys have roads in here every single year, and you, you not only budget the money that you get for the roads, but the manpower. My, my question is, if, if, and it's a big if, I don't want anybody to, to run away with it. If additional funding was put into, was, was received by Public Works to do additional roads, whether it comes from ARPA or comes from somewhere else, is it feasibly possible to execute on more roads, or would your staff be too tied up to do additional roads in a given calendar year?
All right, so let me answer that, but before I do that, I, I should have introduced myself.
Thank you.
Rob Ultra Midas, director, with me Stephen Palermo, superintendent, and Mary Kenny is our executive secretary. But I always say, whenever I give her a title, I say she's, it's, it's underserved because she's really our, our office manager and the glue that, that holds it all together. So to, to answer your question, we're usually set up to pave about six miles of road each year. It's not as simple as bringing in our milling vendor and our paving vendor to get those done. We have to prep those roads. We check and we check the drainage. We're going to fix any drainage pipes that may be breached or have holes in them. We're, we're changing catch basin tops. If we had extra money that came in, we would, my guess is, we would have to outsource the prep of those roads. We could run into problems with the bargaining units because of that.
Okay, thank you. Because I, it, it's been asked of me during the ARPA conversations particularly, why don't we just do this? And I, I kind of wanted to let you answer. I kind of knew that from conversations with Mr. Palermo in the past on different things, but I, I wanted to make sure that, that people got to understand, this is not just something, hey, there's magically some more money, why don't we do this? It's because of all of the work and logistics behind it. It's not as simple as suddenly we've got the cash. It, it's an issue of, we have to, we have, there's a lot of work to get us there, and it's not as simple as, as, well, let's just do it. It's just, and I, and I wanted to make sure people understood that.
That is correct.
And it, it doesn't mean we can't do it, but if we're going to do something like that, it needs to be orchestrated correctly. So you, your department would almost have to maybe be in a position to receive it and then have enough time to potentially plan to do another two miles of road, knowing the money's there in order to get the prep work and, and all the manpower lined up.
Right. And if it makes you feel any better, I just had a conversation with, with the mayor today. You know, this, this winter was mild for snowfall. We certainly, it, it wasn't mild in the sense that we still spent our, our same average in overtime and salt because the storms we had were, were ice storms. But we were able to prep some roads this year, so we're actually going to be milling and paving more than just our cap non roadway paving program allowed. We're actually using some state funds to get a little more done.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else in the council? Anything from the public? There being none, it wasn't just one question.
It wasn't, but, well, we'll stick around for cap non anyways.
All right, thank you. Well, fire's next, and, you know, you should expect to be up here at least three times longer, based on what we just experienced. Page 34, for those of you following along. And as Mr. Ultra Midas pointed out, you do have to tell us who you are for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, the councilors. Joe Satnar, fire chief.
Sam Wilson, deputy fire chief.
Now, if you would allow me, I'd like to provide an opening statement.
Sure.
We, as your fire chiefs, take the responsibility seriously as we take into consideration the needs for the community and expectations of emergency services delivery here in Wallingford, while balancing what the town can afford and is willing to pay. We would like to preface the 22, 23 budget request with an overview of the past year's highlights and accomplishments and some of the challenges that we're facing. We now have almost two years of statistical data and analytics, which has validated the new staffing and response model, and it's working as intended, improving service to the northeastern part of the town, I-91 corridor, and the town as a whole. In 2021, the Wallingford Fire Department was informed in September that it was chosen as the Connecticut EMS Agency of the Year by the Connecticut EMS Advisory Board Council of Regional Presidents. This prestigious designation was awarded in part for the department's dedication and commitment in providing outstanding EMS services to the community of Wallingford and delivering vital, value-added services that include paramedic service on all three career engines and two full-time transport ambulances. Next month, in May, we're looking to implement RSI, which is rapid sequence innovation. This is a life-saving procedure that's being rolled out next month, and it took several months of planning and training. The Wallingford Fire Department would be only one of a handful of agencies statewide that will be able to perform this procedure in the field, and we believe it's the only fire and emergency services agency in the state that will be providing this life-saving intervention. The COVID pandemic and pandemic resurgence has been challenging in a respect that we've had the surge with the Omicron and the other subvariance which we are currently dealing with. This has had an impact on our, on our department as approximately 30% of our workforce has contracted the virus during the pandemic. This has created a burden on our budget as we struggle to staff all our apparatus. The fire department members have been courageously on the front lines throughout the pandemic, and they continue to come to work and bravely serve the community. We're also challenged by our call volume. Last year, our call volume increased by 12% over 2020. Early indications for this year show that trend's going to continue with a projected increase of eight to nine percent in our call volume for 2022. Regional ambulance shortages. The state of Connecticut has been experiencing ambulance staffing issues at a level that has been unprecedented. Social economic factors compounded by the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic has created an inability to staff ambulances regionally, resulting in long ambulance wait times for transport to the hospitals. Fortunately, the Wallingford Fire Department provides ambulance service to the community. However, it's become more routine to run out of ambulances and rely on the mutual aid ambulances to provide additional service during the times of call volume surge. This past year, mutual aid ambulances responded to 911-initiated incidents in Wallingford over 1,400 times for transports. As your Wallingford Fire Department fire and emergency administrators, we're currently evaluating solutions to combat the ambulance shortage. Operational changes. In this year's proposed budget, we have included some operational changes and adjustments to address these ambulance availability issues and increase safety for the public and the fire department members when operating at emergency incidents. Recruitment of talent. We continue to aggressively recruit new firefighter paramedics to fill the open positions. This is a challenge as there's severe shortage of people that want to enter the public safety field and especially emergency services field. Our volunteer division, we continue to actively support the first responders in the volunteer division with the creation of a cost center last year that will cover initial training and support for ongoing advanced training opportunities for volunteers. We've also had an additional capital request for volunteer first responder for personal protective equipment, especially when they first come onboard, and we can outfit them right away and get them up and running. We're currently evaluating statistics from 2021, the first year of this initiative determining its effectiveness. This budget that we present reflects a 1.57% increase in the operational budget, which is approximately $147,000. As your fire administrators, we are annually reviewing costs to, to the town for fire and emergency services by comparing per capita costs with other similar committee, communities for these services. With that information, we're able to determine that we continue to deliver these services at or below the per capita cost of other communities while offering and delivering critical, vital services that are value-added with paramedics and our own transport ambulance. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to present that opening statement. I'm prepared to take any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
If I can just, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I wouldn't want people, especially with regard to the ambulance, to get the wrong impression. The ambulance is, the response is, is for transport. It does not mean that personnel are not there helping with the immediate safety needs, the, the
Transport.
Health medical needs of, of anyone at a scene, but the ambulance is the ability to remove that individual to a hospital or, or other location. So I, I just don't want that misinterpreted.
Thank you, and thank you for that informative summary. It certainly helps as a foundation. Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Chief and, and deputy chief, I, I also appreciate your opening statement. I know you had a pretty dramatic change a few years ago in your staffing model. I know that there was, I think it was in the 1920 year, maybe where there was the, the sort of the hiccup with the
2021.
The 2021, okay, thank you. So how do we feel going forward? Are we going to have adequate in the overtime account? Are we going to have adequate funding to get us through the end of this fiscal year?
Yes.
And do you think what's in the budget for next year is adequate to cover that based on the new model?
I believe I've submitted a responsible budget that'll cover all our liabilities.
Okay, so the, I see we were adding four lieutenants to the budget. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Unfortunately, we're in contract negotiations right now, and some of these things touch on it, so I'll have to defer. The ground rules won't allow me to do that.
Okay, so can you just tell me in general terms, though? So a lieutenant obviously is a promotion from a, a regular firefighter, correct?
That's correct.
And so is a lieutenant required when, like on every call, or what, can you just set the stage for what a lieutenant does that's different?
Yeah, a lieutenant basically is a company officer, commands anywhere from two to five firefighters, and their job is to make sure that scene safety for everybody for responding there, making sure that their people are safe, making sure that documentation reporting's done, making sure the proper actions would be done. They are fully accountable for their, for the actions of their people.
Okay, so would I interpret, would I be going too far to say that a truck doesn't leave the station without, without a lieutenant?
That's not always the case.
Okay. So how often would you say the truck leaves without a lieutenant?
Our ambulances don't have lieutenants on them.
Okay, so, but of the, of the regular fire service, like, is it frequent, is it infrequent? I'm just trying to
Very infrequent. All of ours are currently, they, they go with a lieutenant or an acting officer on it.
Okay, all right, perfect. And now I know all our firemen are paramedics, correct?
No, that's not
Oh, okay. Because that was, I believe that was a thing maybe a few years ago, that all the firemen were paramedics. Is that where, there was a move?
Well, typically, we try to hire paramedics, and
Okay.
If they're firefighters, we send them to fire school because that's where the need is right now. I would say we have about 30 paramedics.
Okay, okay, perfect. So I noticed in the budget, you're adding two positions for next year. Those are firemen, I, I assume, firefighters?
They are EMTs.
Oh, okay. All right, so there was some discussion before about adding an additional ambulance. Is that going to be during this budget year?
I really, I really can't comment on what's going on. Whatever's been in the budget, I believe the mayor put out a summary letter of his budget, but with the contract negotiations, I'm bound by ground rules not to be commenting on it.
Okay, so they're not, so it's not in the budget then? A third ambulance?
There isn't, there's, there's, we've budgeted for any operational adjustments.
Additional EMTs are, are in the budget.
There's two additional EMTs in the budget.
Right, there's a plan to have a daytime ambulance run nine to five weekly.
Okay, but the, so that would require more than two positions, I presume, though?
I don't believe so.
Oh, okay.
But with the staffing we have in those, we, we would be able to have that ambulance available. There is also another ambulance that can't always be available, but is at times, and that's volunteer, provides a basic, a BLS, basic life support ambulance.
Okay.
But this would be a career, five days a week
Right.
To pick up where there's, there's gaps right now with, again, getting an ambulance to transport a patient to the appropriate destination.
Okay, oh, so currently, we have two full-time ambulances plus a volunteer ambulance on occasionally. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, good. So you mentioned, we get mutual aid from other departments about 1,400 times, we got 1,400 times last year?
There's a mutual aid from private ambulance companies such as Hunter's.
Okay, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, understood, understood. So, so that's roughly four or five times a day then?
Yes.
Just to put it into context, how many medical calls does the fire department do, say, in a, in a given year?
Last year was 5,880 EMS requests.
Okay, so 1,400 is a significant percentage of that then?
Yes.
Okay. So you had mentioned that we had a 12% increase between 19 and 20 for, for medical calls, and that, of course, was during the pandemic. How about in the, the pre-pandemic years, like 17 and 18?
Typically, we would get a two to three percent increase is a normal
Okay.
Increase in call volume.
So I guess my question is, was there a year with a lesser, lesser call volume that led to the 12% increase in 1920?
During the beginning of the pandemic, we lost approximately, let's see, about 4% of our call volume.
Okay.
But it made it back up the next year plus.
Okay. So So, so if we add a third ambulance, how frequently would a, a paramedic be required to ride the ambulance as opposed to the EMT?
The EMTs are always on the ambulance?
Right.
And right now, we're riding a paramedic in approximately five times in a 24-hour period.
Okay, so five trips a day, say, with a, with a paramedic?
With a paramedic.
So, if you added a third ambulance, then you'd be required then to have a, you'd have five more trips then with a paramedic, presumably?
That's correct.
So, a paramedic would never ride with the mutual aid, then? Or would they?
They would.
Oh, okay.
If mutual aid does not provide a paramedic ambulance. They do sometimes, and sometimes they don't.
Okay.
However, their availability is.
So, how many, so, of the, I think the staffing total was, was 80 is what you're looking for. So, how many of those are firemen, and how many of those are EMTs?
Currently, we have 57 people in the fire suppression. We have 16 people on the EMT Transport Division.
Okay, so if you had, so if you added the ambulance, and I don't mean to be laser-focused on the third ambulance, but it seems like a, like, and maybe we need it, right? And if we need it, then we should absolutely get it. But I guess my concern is, it just seems like the, you know, the two ambulances is, you know, you have paramedics riding back and forth to the hospital or with the mutual aid or whatever. I'm just concerned that we're, do we have enough staff in this budget to meet the, you know, the needs of the community?
Currently, we have, we're looking at a couple of different operational adjustments, and we want to be incremental as we approach this.
Okay.
We don't want to go over. We want to make sure that we're approaching it thoughtfully and responsibly.
Sure. Now, and you know, please don't take, I mean, no disrespect by this, but you know, I've been in the same job for 23 years with the same company, right? So, if I went to work for another insurance company, all I know is the insurance company that I've been working in for 23 years. I've heard great things about how the Fire Department is running right now. Would you be at all open to the idea of bringing an outside vendor to look at the fire service to perhaps make some recommendations as far as efficiencies or areas, you know, that we could perhaps benefit from?
If someone feels that, that needs to happen, I wouldn't stop that.
Okay. Just something, I don't know, just, you know, we've had some major changes in the, in the fire service over the past few years. And again, no disrespect, but like, I, again, I wouldn't know, you know, if I was put in charge of my company at this point, I wouldn't, you know, I know the pitfalls that we have in my organization now. I wouldn't know the, you know, coming from another, some, a different position might give someone else a different set of eyes. So, just something I've been thinking about. All right, I think I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm looking at the cap non-recurring fund use and the CRA fund use lines that are designated here for the, for replacement of, it looks like two different elements here. So, on, on the, on page 36, where there's the line item for the ambulance with the power stretcher for 275, it doesn't look like that was funded, is that correct?
It doesn't appear to be funded right now in that budget.
All right, so, the department made the request, so I guess my question's going to go to the mayor. Is there any reason why we made the decision to not fund that ambulance, Mr. Mayor? I'm on page 36, right near the bottom.
Isn't that coming out of the ARPA fund, proposed?
I was looking for my letter, yes.
All right.
It's in the letter.
So, that's, that's designated elsewhere, then? Is that, because it's not on this page, it was in the intro letter, is that what?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so that's, all right. Because usually, it's listed here, it was for Public Works. It said use ARPA funds, so that's, that's why I wasn't sure about. So, we, we are in fact funding that, then? Okay, I'm good. That was my concern, that you had asked for it, and it's not here, so that's why I wanted that.
I can be specific. It's number four on the first page of the introductory letter.
All right, I'll, I'll review that again. I know there was a couple of different items in that letter. But like I said, with the Public Works budget, it actually said right there of ARPA twice, and I wanted to make sure, you know, I would have assumed it would have been listed here, but that's okay, I'll, I'll look. So, as long as that's funded, I'm good. Thank you very much.
That was just an oversight on my part.
That's all right, I mean, it happens. As long as it's funded somewhere, I'm good.
Thank you. I think we're done on the council. Questions from the public? Your name and purpose for the record, please.
Tim Wall, Volunteer Fire Chief, North Farms. As I said at the public hearing, I encouraged the council to support the Fire Department's submitted budget. I did bring up at the public hearing in reference to the length of service awards program that helps recruit and retain volunteer firefighters and EMTs. There's been a committee that was appointed approximately two years ago by the mayor. Let's just say, last year, we worked diligently to do some research. We've had some meetings with the mayor, personnel, and Chief Settar and Chief Wilson. So, hopefully, in the next month or so, we may come back forward with some ideas and some suggestions to help recruit and retain volunteer firefighters and EMTs, and would encourage you to support that also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. This would also go for the Fire Police Department, who's not here. Two things, is they, they were talking about how they worked during COVID. I mean, and I just want to say that ARPA money can be used to, and I think rightfully so, compensate or show the appreciation of the job that the Fire Department, Police Department, Town Hall, other departments did, work through this. That doesn't have to be a large stipend, but something to show appreciation for the work they did. Number one, that's something you could discuss on ARPA. Number two is, how many, you talked about the number of ambulances run. It's three units during the day or two, two or?
It's two, 24/7.
And there's, you're hoping to get a third one for the day? I guess through the mayor, because you can't speak on that.
We have funding that would allow for a, a third ambulance nine to five on, on weekdays.
The number of calls that you get between five and midnight? That's just a general for EMT or fire, or for ambulance services. Are there a lot that have to go out to the mutual aid?
The busiest time for call volume is between the hours of 8:00 and 6:00 p.m., 8:00 a.m., 6:00 p.m.
But during the, the, I don't know, so if the eight, if an 8:00 a.m. shift comes in, or I don't know what time your shifts are, what time would they be done, then?
Currently, our shifts go 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and a night shift comes in 6:00 p.m., and they work till 8:00 a.m. the next morning.
So, it's 12, okay. I was, I mean, they provide, and so does Police Department, they left, they weren't here. I would hope there'd be more police officers on the road, too. But I would hope that the council would not only support the numbers to put a third ambulance on, but to put it on 24/7, not for a 12-hour shift. The service that they provide and the, the speed that they can get there quicker than a mutual aid for somebody can make a big difference. I don't know if they could speak on that, but mutual aid wouldn't get there as quickly as you most likely could get there. Yes, sir. I mean, you guys are the first responders.
Sir, I have, we have to, we look at statistics and analytics every day. And we, we want to be incremental as we approach this and, you know, take a few steps, make sure that this is the right thing to do, and continue evaluating it, and then move forward if that's what it takes.
And I would hope that, as Mr. Wall said, that you support them, but support them fully and, and even in the future, and the ARPA money for many of the workers in town here, Public Works, too. Thank you.
I think that's all we have for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last for us tonight are cap non-recurring and six-year capital. Our effort to dismiss Public Works was apparently ineffective. Pages 83 and 84. Mr. Senna, am I correct to perceive that the cap non-recurring on page 23 is really the funding of the cap non-recurring fund, how the money comes in?
That is correct.
And 83 and 84 is how we spend it?
That is correct.
Okay. Once again, let us know who you are.
Good evening, Rob Voltermittas, Public Works Director.
Allison Kapachinsky, Town Engineer.
All right, questions from the council? At the moment, Mr. Gross, did you have anything? I think we kept them for you. I saw your hand. Okay, well, I misread the hieroglyphics in the back of the room and kept you here unnecessarily. So, that being said, this is all the business we have tonight, and I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.